At this time, I would like to inform everyone that Councilwoman Massagia is out of town and she's not able to be here tonight. And so, that's what the issue is there. Item number five, we had comments from attendees at this time, we opened the floor, that if anybody's got anything that they wish to discuss tonight, that's not actually on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, we'll get to it a little later. But if you've got anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda, we'll certainly listen to you at this time, please come forward. If not, we'll close comments. At this time, we're gonna move into whole business, item number six. I don't know if everyone's aware, but we had our budget meetings, and in our budget meetings, there was considerable amount of money that we were having to guess at for the next, for the next budget. And we put several items off for at least six months and look at them in six months and see where we were as far as our budget went. At that time, there were some issues that were brought forth by the Hamlet Police Department. And we have done some research on it, or Councilman McQueen has done some excellent research on it. And I would like for him to go with that, and then if we have any rebuttal from the police department, we'll listen to that, Mr. McQueen.
Okay, first that, just a few things, can you pull up the PowerPoint, the presentation that?
From the May, or from the?
From the budget meeting.
From the March budget meeting?
If you don't mind. Scott, you may want to come up here, because I do have a couple of questions during some of the stuff, if you don't mind.
It may take me just one moment, but I'll?
Yeah, maybe just make it go quicker, or whoever wants to come up here.
Councilman McQueen, there was two PowerPoint presentations that were given.
It was the one on gangs.
Zach, we may need to transfer over. I can do this, I think we just may need to go on.
Aren't we just connected?
I believe this is it, Council.
Uh, if it is, well, when these, when we got it sent out, we didn't have the videos and stuff, because it was too big of a file, I think.
That's correct, you are correct, Council, so I took out the first few videos in the slides when I sent it out to Council.
Yes, if you go to the next one. Um, and, and first off, I am not in any way criticizing you or your department, please don't think that. That's not what this is about, there were some things in the slideshow that I questioned and brought it up to, I know I talked to the mayor about it, and to the city manager. And the council never said that we were not gonna do anything with another officer. But unfortunately, at the second budget meeting, you wasn't here.
Right.
And a patrolman came and got involved in some of the conversation that we had amongst ourselves. I don't know if you had asked him to come, or he just came on his own.
He was working security.
Well, there was two here, I don't know, I don't know what he was doing, it doesn't really matter. But if, if you look on this slide right here, Scott, six years ago, um, you keep on reading, I am not gonna call it any names or whatever, that's really not relevant, but six years ago, basically, there were zero validated gang members in Richmond County. Six years ago, there was zero. Now, as you can see in the slide that was presented by the police department, there are between forty and fifty at any given time. Between forty and fifty now at any given time.
Correct, and we got some more data.
Okay, so that's accurate?
No, it's like, Captain's got it right here, I think it's a hundred and twenty-six validated gang members, that's validated through NC Gang Net and the North Carolina State Highway Patrol.
In what, in, in the county?
In, uh, Hamlet. In Hamlet, we got it in the file here.
Okay, uh, if you go to the next one.
You said a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Get the next one, Jonathan, I'm sorry.
Is that countywide?
Okay. Okay, that's good, um.
Is that including people from Dobbin Heights also?
Or is that Hamlet addresses?
All in the city limits of Hamlet, I would have to break down.
Well, that's, I'm gonna come back in just a minute. Okay, this is what was presented, the gang assessment, and I'm pretty sure this came from the same website that you got that information from. This is what we got in the presentation. And if you look, I don't know if you can read it good or not, but it's a progression from, from none down to the bottom. The white are no gangs, the, the green are one to five, the blue, six to twenty, the orange, twenty-one to forty, and the red is more than forty. And then the yellow, which you would think was in the normal, natural progression, you would think that the yellow would be worse than the red. But in reality, the yellow is at-risk counties, and if you look at the map, Richmond County is in the at-risk area as far as a gang, yeah.
Okay, may I say something, I do remember in his presentation, he said this slide is not up to date, this is an old slide.
Right, and it changed one way, it, it did change, because I, I seen the new slide.
Okay, well, I haven't seen the new slide.
Well, it didn't change much, Richmond County's still listed in the at-risk category. And then I don't know if you can read it or not, but at-risk counties are those counties with no, no identified gangs, but are adjacent to counties with identified gangs, and if you look, we connect to Moore County, who has identified gangs, by the same people that's got the stats that you just said about the hundred and twenty-six. The, the, the one change that I saw on the updated slide was Scotland County. Scotland County slipped into the green color between one and five. So Richmond County is still listed in the current as having zero gangs. Gangs, not gang members, there's a difference there, and I'm sure you're aware of that.
Right.
Okay, and if you look, the reasons, the reasons why we could be an at-risk county is because we touch a county that's bordering with a gang, or there's an interstate corridor that goes straight up, or you're a major population. Of course, we're not a major population, so the reason we're at risk, according to what the stats are there, is because we border adjacent counties with gangs, and that highway, the highway is a main thing. Drug trafficking, human trafficking, and things like that.
Correct.
So, all right, now, if you would go to the next slide. Okay. Validated gang members in Richmond County, there are three hundred and seventy-five validated gang members in Richmond County. All right, now, if you would go back to slide two. Okay, there, it says there's anywhere between forty and fifty gang members at any one time. Okay, and now if you go back to the other slides, we can see that. You see now where we had some questions, it, it wasn't like we were trying to say there wasn't any issue, or we're not gonna look at the issue, by any stretch of the imagination, that was not it.
Correct, and also, I think people were got in their mind, we're saying gang, we ask for a drug and a gang officer, because drug and gangs go hand in hand.
They do, but they're not, they're not synonymous, though. You would have to agree that they're not synonymous.
I just know what we've been dealing with on the streets.
Some people sell drugs or not, and if you look at the macro level, you could possibly say gangs were the result of the drugs getting around, but locally, not everybody that's a drug dealer is a gang member, right or wrong?
Correct, but we're going off on all the shootings and stuff we had in that last homicide.
Well, we'll get to that in just a second. The next thing that's on there, in the city of Hamlet, there are eighty-seven validated gang members. Okay, this slide was given to us about a month ago, says eighty-seven. Now, you got statistics saying there's a hundred and twenty-something, and the first slide says there's between thirty and forty.
Forty and fifty.
Forty and fifty, which caused confusion, which is why we asked the patrol officer that we wanted, um, I think that's his phone, that, that we wanted some clarification on some things, okay? And next thing you know, after, after that meeting, anonymous person called Channel Nine, they came down, did a scathing report on the city, one that I've never seen that, that made a town look so bad in all my life. And it was, it was, in my opinion, it was pathetic what I saw there, because that's not Hamlet.
I agree.
That's, that's not, it's pathetic.
We didn't call them.
And that's not, that's not your, that's not your fault, I'm just, I'm just telling you that's the way I feel.
I know, I didn't.
Okay, now, if you lived in Richmond County for any period of time, you know for a fact that there's been numerous gang stories about Hamlet in the paper, okay? Whether you fall into the category of somebody who's gonna believe there was between forty and fifty gang members, three hundred and seventy-five gang members, eighty-seven or one hundred and twenty-seven, you just don't know, all right? I've not seen any other municipalities around here that that's been the, the focus of reporting to the media as gangs. And I'm gonna push back a little bit on that. So just, so just bear with me. As you know, if you've read the stats that come off of that website where you got that information, some of these gang members that's verified are duplicated. And the reason they're duplicated is because aliases, dates of birth, and things like that. Not saying they are or they aren't. I would push, push back a little bit on the number of gang members in Hamlet. I would want to see, are they in Hamlet or are they in the greater Hamlet area, Dobbin Heights and things like that? But bottom line, I think that the media portrayal has not been accurate. I'm not saying that's your fault.
It's not our fault, the reason the media?
I'm not saying that's your fault, but I'm just saying that if, if you, if you take that slide at face value right there, eighty-seven validated gang members in Hamlet, that leaves two hundred and ninety other gang members in this county. And you can't tell me that we've got eighty-seven gang members that's doing all the gang activity. You just, there's no way you can say that. So to me, there's a false narrative that's put in place, I mean?
As far as I'm concerned, we had asked for what we asked for, and what we felt like as a department in public safety.
And, and here, I'm not talking about that right now.
Here, here's, that don't have, but the whole issue is, is we're, we're talking, one slide's forty to fifty, one slide's three seventy-five, one slide's eighty-seven, and then today it's one twenty-six.
I'm just pushing back on some of the facts, I'm not talking about subjective information, because that's not fair to you, that's not fair to me. And I'm not here to try to play gacha or anything like that, because I think your department's done a good job.
I know we have.
Okay? So if you would, if you would go to slide seven. Back over, the other way.
Other way.
The other back. Okay. Right here, Sheriff Clemmons was quoted in this presentation, and he was also here and spoke, and has done an outstanding job, and I know you've worked with him and some of the other people's worked with him. But if you read the bottom line there, sheriff added that these aren't just wannabes or pretenders, several individuals have been identified as gang members, okay? Several's not three hundred and eighty-seven, several's not a hundred and twenty-seven or whatever. I'm just saying there's differences in what was presented to this council.
Right, and numbers are numbers, you can work numbers and stats how you wanna work them, everybody can go out here and do research, and you can come up with different numbers than I will, that's statistical data.
Gotcha.
Everybody, everybody understands that.
Hundred percent agree it's gonna be different, but to go from several to forty to fifty to three hundred and eighty-seven?
I know, I've worked close with Sheriff Clemmons and Chief Billy Kelly.
I, I know you have, and we're getting ready to talk about that right now.
Because he says several does not mean.
Okay, well, I'm just telling, but what, but you're not listening to.
I'm trying to.
What you're not listening to is this is what we got to base a decision to spend almost a hundred thousand dollars this year.
But I think everybody's focusing on gangs, it's not just gangs.
That's where your department is focused in the media.
Drugs and it's violence, it's the shootings that we've had on this side of the city.
But we're gonna, I'm gonna get to that in just a second. Richmond County Sheriff James Clemmons announced the formation of a gang task force, made up of Richmond County Sheriff's Office Rockingham, Hamlet, North Carolina Bureau of Investigation, North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Adult Corrections, Juvenile Justice, Richmond County Schools, Special Police, the District Attorney, the US District Attorney's Office for New York District. That is the way to handle any problem such as this.
And we are.
Exactly, that being said, when you have a task force that the sheriff has devoted to and recruited your, your department to help with, Rockingham to help with, a task force does not hire officers, a task force utilizes officers that are in place. Because when some of the problems are gone, you might not need the officer, there might not be a need. I think that's an excellent, excellent way to handle the problem. And I just don't see where hiring one officer in Hamlet would either trump this or would be enough to get that officer to be there as long as that's gonna go on.
First, you gotta look at, the federal government's only gonna be here to limit the amount of time.
Any task force does a limited amount of time.
Right.
Any task force.
And you gotta look at the other agencies, Richmond County Sheriff's Office, Rockingham PD, they have their own division that's devoted to fight gangs, I'm not gangs, but drugs, they have their own narcotics division.
Okay.
I've sat in meetings in this chamber here with our former city manager Marcus Abernathy, Sheriff James Clemmons, Chief Billy Kelly, and some of these men that are behind me today. They wanna see Hamlet be self-sufficient, they're here to help us, and they will come here and help us, but they, we need, I've been told, you need your own narcotics officer, you know, we don't mind helping, but we need.
I, I agree, Hamlet needs to be self-sufficient, but I'm?
I think everybody got tunnel vision to the gangs and the media come down here, because this went out on your daily journal, Channel Nine, we had a council, a major event that made national news, and that's the Fourth of July fireworks. That's how Channel Nine got involved and came down, that's in my heart, the way I feel.
Gotcha, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point.
And that's, that's why we're at where we're at, and we just, we just did in essence of what we thought from boots on the ground and working cases, working these shootings, we thought we needed this as an arsenal in our tool belt to help combat crime, to get this side of the city straight. My men and women and myself have worked hard, along with agencies, federal, state, local, and surrounding, to make Hamlet different today, and it has been, and stats that we got proves that.
Okay, and to be perfectly honest, nobody's?
It's starting to tweak back up.
Nobody said anything that you've done any bad job.
Right.
Nobody said that, you may be inferring that, but nobody said that.
I just, things I hear.
All right, before we move on, I will say that the citizens in Hamlet pay county taxes as well.
Right.
So we shouldn't have to be self-sufficient, because I personally don't pay money to the county for us just to be self-sufficient. We deserve the assistance and help from, because it's a county, county problem.
Understand that, my vision for Hamlet Police Department is a high vision that I can do these things barring budget restraints, and I get that we present this stuff, and I get that the budget is bad, and as far as I'm concerned, it's a no, and it's a dead issue. How it keeps coming back out is beyond me, we're moving forward, we're gonna fight crime in Hamlet, citizens are gonna be safe, I can bet you my life on that.
Would you like me to answer why it keeps getting brought back up?
It's not me. No, sir, it's not me.
I, I could answer, we've talked about it, and it was brought up again today. So I'm just gonna leave it there, and we'll, we'll talk about it, but it's not you, no. But we'll, we'll talk about it.
Slide eight. While some in Richmond County refuse to acknowledge a local gang problem, and, and then it goes into what the Attorney General said.
Right.
And who, I mean, I know you didn't do this presentation, who, who is, who is the who that refuses to acknowledge the local gang problem? I mean, the sheriff has started a task force, um?
I guess it's because, you know, like the sheriff put in the paper, the wannabes, pretenders, there's some people that has that mindset, and I, I'll, and I'll tell you, I was one of those people. I served as a school resource officer for five years, until I started seeing the stuff escalated and the shootings that we're having, and a man coming down in front of my revenue school walking to me, and he turns out to be the guy that shot, and he goes on the porch, and he collapses, and I'm rendering first aid, broad daylight, not nighttime, down in the hole on Thomas Street like it was back in the day when you and I worked together.
Absolutely.
These are daytime shootings, these are daytime shootings. And so I'm sitting out here and looking at this stuff and evaluating this stuff and say, hey, we got some issues going on.
Okay.
And I need to try to fix the problem.
Okay.
Now, the presentation was done by an instructor that is a patrolman, but also an instructor that is a firearm instructor, that works in the investigative division, and it was overseen by my captain, my chief investigator, who works major crimes and all crimes, is my public information officer, because it makes sense that he's the investigator, that he tells what's going on in our community for his crimes, and the police chief just don't come in here to have my name put in the paper saying something that might mess his case up in the court of law.
Okay.
And we're gonna take training, we're gonna take training him and I both at the end of the month. At Stanley Community College, we can drive back and forth on dealing with the media, and I have changed.
Not, not arguing with you.
Yeah, I have changed our policy on how, not changed the policy, but I've gone over in departmental meeting, here's a news release, you fill one out when you work here how many years? Here's the policy, this is what it says, row guys, you got any issues that news related that you wanna put in the paper? You fill it out, you put it in the captain's box, the captain will get with me, we will look at it, if we got questions and think it's questionable or something, we will go to our city manager.
Okay.
And he gets the final say. That's the orders that's been given by, by me.
Nothing, nothing wrong with that.
This stuff broke out when I was not here, and all, everything broke loose.
And to me, in all honesty, that was a problem, you should've been here.
Well, in all honesty, in all honesty, I was trying to go and grease the wheel to get a grant for governor highway safety, because here's another thinking of mine, if I got two traffic team guys out here busting their butt stopping cars for DWI's or anything, you know yourself as a police officer that you worked before, if you stop a car for any violation, that it can lead to any other criminal activity at foot, that could be drugs in our city, guns in our city. So I was trying to grease the wheel, but we just got notification yesterday, good job, your grant was of merit, but due to budgetary, and we have to pick whoever, whatever, the money can't go to us this year. We encourage you to apply again, so we didn't, we didn't get the grant, we're trying to do everything, we're trying to do everything we can, we're not here.
Yeah.
We're not here to have an argument with council, I don't want my guys to have arguments with council.
I hope you don't think that's what this is, I'm just trying to go over some of the facts of what's here.
Some of the stuff, my office is open, and you can come see me, we don't have to do this tonight, you can come see me.
Well, the problem was, it was brought in here to us publicly, and then in the paper, and then on Channel Nine. So if it's gonna be brought publicly, we're gonna get the numbers straight publicly.
And, and, and if it's there, it needs to be reported that way, nobody's saying not. But I just would, I would butt heads with somebody to tell me that if you pick up the paper and, and the crime happened in Hamlet was gang-related, and the crime in Laurinburg, Rockingham, the county, Waysburg, everywhere else, is not, this is gang-related, to me, that's a problem. That's a problem.
Okay.
And that's why I'm bringing up the gang issue, because if you watch that Channel Nine news report, that's what they talked about. They talked about gangs, the gang problem.
I got you.
Okay, uh, now, if you would, um, go to, go to the, um, the next one. Okay, right here, this was another thing I took issue with, and I know there's some, some different things flipped back and forth, just, just bear with me, and don't take offense to what I'm about to say. From twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, we were presented with eleven death investigations that were supposedly drug and gang-related.
No. That's as criminal offense to show you all the crimes that were happening.
Criminal offense, and what's the first one, Scott?
Death investigation.
And how many does it say?
Eleven.
Eleven.
And we got the folder to show and clarify that, and I was, my understanding that they come back when you questioned it.
They did.
It was a good call when they explained it to you.
No, no, he came back and said there were two.
We've had three murders.
He said two.
We've had three. Got the facts, I got the folders, I can prove it.
Well, he said two.
He, he said two, and, and we're gonna get to the three, because I've got that too.
And some have been the opium, some, some have been overdoses, and two were suicide, that people were autopsies that was under influence of drugs or alcohol, that's your eleven death investigations, we have the folder here, if you'd like to see them.
I'm not saying there was not eleven deaths, that maybe overdoses, accidental drug overdose, suicide, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying criminal offense, eleven death investigations.
But it's not gang-related.
Another question, well, I mean, it was presented in that, in that context.
Everybody's going to gangs, drug and gang.
The next one, robbery, in that three-year period, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, it said there was thirty-five, right? Okay? You think that's high?
I think so, yeah.
And, and any crime?
We have two stores robbed in one night.
Any crimes high.
Robbed, and then an hour later, several been robbed.
Totally agree with you, totally agree with you, I mean, you, you answered the call at the pantry where the store was robbed, and, I mean, we, we know that those things have happened. Three-year increments, twenty-ten through twenty-twelve, stats that was reported by the police department to the state, to the FBI, to the Uniform Crime Report.
I have that too.
Twenty-ten to twenty-twelve, there were thirty-five robberies, same number, same exact number. Slide ten. Uh, no, go on, yeah, that one right there, okay? This is an excellent example of good police work right here.
Absolutely.
Okay, police charged eighteen people, including mother and son, in a month-long undercover investigation into narcotics distribution. You did that with your existing staff, Scott.
I know, and just think, if we had one more that could do that, what, what, what could happen, we had somebody that's?
No, no doubt that if, if one officer would solve gang and drug problems, every department in the country would.
It's not one, it's just one guy that's gonna specialize and train, that would work with my three other men, and in turn, it's gonna escalate their, their level of work, because they're gonna have to do more search warrants and everything else.
That's, that's an excellent.
It's gonna increase.
That's an excellent, uh, deal right there.
Our idea was to increase, you know how much, you see that cash, we got thirteen thousand dollars.
It's not about getting the money in, it's about getting drugs out.
It's about getting revenue in, if we can't get drugs and revenue in, it's gonna benefit departments, it's gonna help our budget.
Yeah, but you don't wanna really start hunting money as a police officer, because then you got ethical issues that you're coming in. You wanna get the drugs off the street.
You wanna get drugs off the street, there's no ethical issue with our money at Hamlet Police Department, because it goes to this lady right here.
Then you go to, uh, mm-mm, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about stops being initiated. You've heard officers, I have, I know you've heard officers come in, I'm gonna go start, you know, I'm gonna go get this big drug deal, and we're gonna bring a bunch of money in, you know, that's what I'm, I'm not talking about anything like that. Don't, don't, don't take it like that. All right, um, slide twelve, just going down to stop you. Here again, excellent work with the staff that you have, excellent work. And I think you got a staff big enough to where you can pull somebody out of your three detectives to work drugs periodically. I think you got enough people, you could send somebody to be a part of that sheriff's drug task force.
They're doing it, they're, they're doing it.
I, I agree with you, I agree with you. Okay, um, go, go down to the next slide. The, the, the twenty separate shootings, this is where I, man, I can't, I didn't have access to any of this, did twenty people get shot in twelve months?
I think that's some shooting in occupied dwelling, not just people getting shot, I think it's shooting in the cars and shooting in the houses too.
Or just shooting up in the air?
I had, I had a question to this one.
We got all that separated, y'all can come over, there it is, I'll show you.
The question I had to this one here, Scott, was, it says in the, in the header, gang activity suspected in most Hamlet shootings, but then it says approximately twenty separate shootings in twelve months, either drug or gang-related.
A lot of, a lot of it is, guys, on, on?
I, I know, but I?
Not knocking that it's not, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're over, if we're over-reporting the gang involvement, because nobody else is reporting this, and I really thought that's what y'all were getting to when you said people didn't acknowledge that there was a gang problem. I mean, we got gang members.
We've got?
We don't know how many gang members, we got, one estimate's forty, as high as, close to four hundred. So we, we don't know, and I'm asking, uh, um, any, anyone shooting, you know, Mark knows, is, is bad.
Yeah.
But how many times in the course of a year, while we were working, did we have close to that number of shots in occupied, well, Don's the officer, he's been here. It, it, it happens, and I don't know how you can say it's gang-related, and I'm focusing on the game, because that's what the portrayal's been in the media. And I, 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 I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely just very upset with that false narrative. There's people that's volunteering in places in Hamlet that, that their spouses won't let them come to Hamlet to volunteer because of the gang problem in Hamlet. There are people calling us up, telling us all kind of, you know, horror stories about they don't want their family to go walking down the streets because that's not Hamlet.
No, it's.
It's not Hamlet.
Things are happening in Hamlet though. You got good people going to Dollar General getting robbed at gunpoint.
They're happening everywhere. They're happening everywhere. Um, even the officer that did this gave a quote to the paper, Hamlet's problem's no different than anybody else. We're just the only ones that's reporting it like that. That was in, that was in one of the papers.
You have, you, you my investigator.
Well, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. I don't think that's, I, I think that's going off the rails a little bit. But what I will say is unless you're a hundred percent sure, it doesn't need to be suspected. I mean, you got, you got to agree, that's kind of, it's kind of gray area there. It makes the city look bad. Uh, go on down on the next one. And keep on going. Keep on going. Keep on going. Keep on going. Okay, this right here, gang drug investigator, monitored gang members and stuff like that. I mean, I think the law enforcement officers know what the drug and gang investigator would be. To me, this is an example right here of this officer being portrayed in this PowerPoint as a drug and gang investigator. That's not what that is. That is a community oriented police officer on the streets right there. That's how you gonna really address your crime in your town. All right, go to the next one. Uh, the next one. Right here. Hamlet, the little town that can combat the dr- uh, gang and drug problem, this and that and the other. Here again, this guy right here, um, I'm actually familiar with him. Uh, that's, uh, Tommy Norman with North Little Rock Police Department in Arkansas. He's basically a YouTube star because he gets out and he interacts with, uh, kids in, in poverty areas and low income areas. And makes videos and things like, he's not a drug or a gang officer. He's an officer on the street like you got several of. And he does a really good job getting out there. Not saying your guys don't, I'm just saying that's not a drug or a gang officer. And that's, that's how you gonna stop some of the crimes and stuff. Um, and by the way, the, the city that he works in has got one of the higher crime rates in Arkansas. So you, like you said, stats are all over the place sometimes. Okay, now, that's all on that. And I just want to go over a few personal things that I found. To me, the task force is the way to go. Drug and gang, gang, drug, whatever. That task force does not have to be just for gangs. It could be drug gangs because as you said, they're synonymous in some respects, they go together.
And that's why we asked and tried to be good stewards of the budget. We asked for a drug gang officer instead of trying to ask for two separate positions.
Gotcha.
And they work together.
And the reason you have a task force is the makeup is given, um, is, is, is from people that's already employed there. Everybody goes and sends somebody and they form a task force and they go do the job. When they make progress, they might step away from it. And there's not necessarily a need to, to put that into play. Here again, Channel Nine has some, some false sta- uh, information on the cost and all. Uh, gang and drug officers total salary was according to y'all, forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Plus you got to have a vehicle, the lower end estimates on the vehicle is like twenty-four thousand. That would have been a seventy-two thousand dollar investment for the city at that time for that one, for that one officer. All right? Um, and the facts we seen, I mean, you seen the facts are not, are, are all over the place, the stats. You would have, if you don't agree with, with anything I said, you have to agree, the information we were presented was all over the place. I mean, would you agree with that, right or wrong? Forty to three hundred and eighty-seven, forty to fifty, three hundred and eighty-seven? I mean, he says eighty-seven in Hamlet, you say a hundred and twenty something. I mean, it's just, it's all over the place. You've shown in, in some of this stuff and some of the stuff I know about, that you've done a, a really good job with the officers you have. Showed that proven. Now, I, I'm not got, I don't have much more. The, the crime stats, um, for twenty sixteen and twenty ten, which is, I pulled those because I, I couldn't get to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen because, you know.
They're not out yet.
They're not out yet, as you know. But I just, y'all went a three year increment. So I looked at twenty, um, sixteen through twenty fourteen. Okay? And then I went back and progressively went back all the way down to two thousand and five crime stats. Uh, up to two thousand and sixteen, up to that point, what three year period would you think would be the highest violent crime rate in Hamlet? According to what we've been told, it would be the most, it would be the most current year. But in all actuality, there was more violent crime in every category from twenty ten to twenty twelve in Hamlet. There was more violent crime, there was more robberies, more aggravated assaults, all the way through the progression. Now, the, the area of stats that, that I couldn't see, you know, it's gonna be higher. Because I also found, um, violent crime index figure on the same, the, the FBI's website that gives all the national crime. Between twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, there was a four percent increase in violent crime across the board. Yeah, just across the board in general. You know well as I do, crime rates go down, they go up, they level off, they never stay the same. Okay? So between twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen, um, well, in, in twenty twelve, there was one point two million offenses in, in the country. Twenty fourteen is down to one point one million. All right? Twenty sixteen in two year period is back up to one point two five million. So the crime, the violent crime rate has risen nationally. And y'all have done a good job in your department, keeping that crime rate lower than what the rise is on the national level. And you should be commended for that. Um, because that's your officers did that. All right? Um. I was shocked with everything that's been presented in the media over the past year. That in all actuality, the highest violent crime rate was twenty ten to twenty, um, twenty twelve. That, that blew me away, but it was.
But the new ones hadn't come out on the shootings that we had, this just occurred. We're asking for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget based upon the shootings and stuff that we got going on outside the city.
Gotcha, and we, and we.
How many shootings you known in your time working here that you have a shooting in broad daylight when schools going on?
We, we had a bunch of shootings.
How many times have you known an officer in the city of Hamlet to be shot at?
Still don't see where one officer's gonna change it.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not arguing about, about either or. Lord forbid anybody could, could be shot at or shot at any given time. That's horrible.
Yeah, I've been shot at.
That's horrible. That's horrible.
That's what woke me up when.
There's, there's no, there's, there's no doubt about it. That's horrible, okay? I'm just saying the way it's presented, ha- i- in my opinion is not accurate. And I think some of these facts are showing that it was not presented accurately. Hamlet Police Department, uh, requested two, two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars in the current operating budget of one point five seven million. That's almost a twenty percent increase. A one year twenty percent increase. Population our size, one point eight million dollar budget, police department, that's, that's huge. All right, now. People in the community, people in the media have said that the city council has not looked after the police department. If you watch the Channel Nine's news segment, which I'll just call complete and utter nonsense, period. I didn't agree with it. I don't know if you agreed with it or not, but that didn't represent this town. It did not represent this town. Well, this is what the police de- the police department's received from this council. This council over the past few years.
I know what we received, we're grateful for what we received.
I know you are, but I'm just gonna, I'm making this public. I'm not, I'm not talking to you about this now. I'm just, I'm making this public now. City council has taken the following steps in the past few years to assist the Hamlet Police Department with officer retention. And ultimately will create lower crime. You agree a seasoned officer's gonna help with the crime.
If we can keep that retention, that's what I've been working hard and doing.
You would agree that over the past ten to twelve to fifteen years, Hamlet Police Department has lost fifteen to twenty percent of their officers every year. Every year.
When I came in as chief, I had no patrol captain, no captain of investigation, no lieutenant, I was five in a whole.
But that wasn't just, that wasn't just in that time period. It's been going back since the nineties. People come here and they leave. Okay? This is what this council's did for our officers, to help them in their combating of crime and gangs and drugs. Increased officer pay to that of nearby agencies where we can keep some of our officers here with, with, with the money that's compatible everywhere else. That was huge to me. That was a, a passionate thing that I come in here and did when none of the other employees got any. We got y'all's pay up because we were spending more money hiring new officers than it would be to pay the officers we got. This council has made it to where every officer that lives within a six mile radius of Hamlet has a take home card. Crime prevention strategy and technique right there.
That's part of my proposal and I thank you guys for accepting it.
And, and absolutely.
That's part of my proposal for retention.
Um, we started paying your officers for overtime or holiday overtime accumulated pay. So the time don't build up. Did that a couple of years ago. That, even more money in the officer's pockets there, hopefully for retention. Continue to pay for continuing education and training. There was actually one person that came to our meeting not long ago who questioned the fact that we didn't have enough money in your training budget. Has your training budget been cut?
No.
Has not been cut and it won't be cut.
And we train.
You can have an officer go to, to attend a, a public institution for a higher degree, associate or bachelor's degree at your department right now.
Correct.
This council's made sure that stayed there to help with the overall problem of what we're talking about. Maintain positions of officer to citizen ratio that's above the national average in Hamlet. And close to the same for officers, citizens in a ten thousand citizen. Cause this broke up, the higher the population, the, the fewer officers they have per citizens. Ten thousand and below, we're at sixty-three hundred. You're right there with the people with ten thousand per. The officers are there. I wish we could get you twenty more. But the media has portrayed it like you don't have enough to do your job. I know you want more. I, 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 I know you want more. But what I'm saying is we are where we need to be nationally and in the same sized towns, similar sized towns. Okay, we've talked a lot about drugs. Well, in Hamlet, there's one police officer for every three hundred and twenty people, roughly, somewhere in that area. The national average is one police officer for every four hundred and seventy-six people. So you got a better coverage than the national average. This council funded and started a K nine program with not one, but two K nine dollars. That could focus an interdiction in traffic stops on the drug problem.
And we used a thousand dollar Walmart grant and five hundred dollars I think for drug money to buy the second dog with fifteen hundred.
And, and, and that's, and that's great. And that's great. And if you, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't, you know, since you bring that up. The reason why we didn't fund the second dog is because there had been issues with the dog program in the past. We told you we would do one dog, showed that it was doing good. Y'all chose to do that, yeah, before we had a chance to look at the total program.
But that dog program was not under my watch, that's past administration.
Okay, but it's there.
It's there now, I got a good guy doing it.
You have two officers trained with dogs that can search out drugs and probably other things, right?
And we use K nine today on a, a, a break in to help the county.
And I'm proud that we've got that for your department to use. Um, didn't realize that you didn't get the grant, but we also allowed you to seek funding for the North Carolina Governor Highway Safety Program for two officers. We gave you that permission a while back, okay? Why would we a month before vote to put another officer on at eighty thousand dollars to the city? When there was a chance that we could have two fully funded officers coming on at a later date? You know? I'm sad that after that budget meeting, that an anonymous person called Channel Nine News.
I am too.
I, I'm really sad that that happened. I mean, he didn't do anything wrong because it was a public meeting, they didn't do anything wrong.
Right.
But it, it, it didn't help the narrative that I think has been exaggerated in stats, if nothing else. I mean, you might not agree with it, but the stats are what they are. And we've also purchased, you, some high powered rifles. Um, know you wanted more, but I mean, you, you got enough to where you could assign them, um, to people on patrol. You could make it work to where they would be one working, a guy, you know, the officers would have the rifles at all times. That's all I've got. In no way, in no way, shape or form am I criticizing the results that's the, the police department's given. Because if you look at what I, at what I showed you, you're doing better than the highest rate back twenty ten, back eight years ago. All right? Now, you may get your new stats in a year or so and what you reporting in, that, that we can compare, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen and twenty sixteen. But we already have twenty sixteen. And every year, twenty ten to twenty twelve was bigger than twenty sixteen in terms of violent crime. So, but you got to keep in mind that there is, the, the crimes are going up. The, the violent crime rate's going up. That's all I had. I wanted to clarify that. And personally, I will say that, um. To me, what I've seen in the media, what, especially that Channel Nine, that news deal, that doesn't represent Hamlet. That doesn't represent Hamlet at all. And it, it, to me, it's unfair. To us, it's unfair to your department. And I would just ask that unless you're a hundred percent sure that there is a, a crime that was committed. That you're one hundred percent sure that it was a, a gang crime? Cause there's no way in, in the world that Hamlet's got a third of the gang members and all of the gang crime. There's no way, period. Appreciate the job you're doing. Look forward to maybe getting y'all some stuff in the future.
Anyone else have a question? Is it like to ask the chief or clarify something? Mr. Martin, you got anything? I've got just a couple of things real quick. I was very upset about the fact that we were, uh, shown the way we were in the Channel Nine report. And, uh, that some of the others didn't get an opportunity to talk to them about it. But, uh, a couple of questions I have, when you look at the, uh, number of arrests that are going on in the county. Uh, just over the last couple of three weeks, everything's been drug arrests, drug arrests, drug arrests. And, uh. It, they're just not showing a, uh, a, a gang situation right now. And I will have to tell you, I have, you know, I've talked to some other people in some other agencies. And the drug issue is the biggest thing that they're working on at this time. The, uh, one thing that we need to know, need to understand is that forty, roughly forty-four percent of our city budget, roughly forty-four percent of our city budget. Goes to fire and police. That is a lot of money. That, that doesn't leave a whole lot. We've have had to, uh, project a half a million dollars out of our savings to balance the budget for next year. Now, probably by the end of the year, we'll come out considerably less. But, you know, the only question that I have and that is for employees is if you say, well, yeah, I got to have this, I got to have this for sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. What other agency should we take the money away from? I mean, we just all got to think about that.
Right.
And I have absolutely no problem with what the police department's doing. You guys are doing a fantastic job. As Jesse said, our crime rate's really down. Uh, I would ask you this, when and where was the last time a police officer was shot at?
The last time was Charles Tally and I, you know, that was out of West Hamlet Grocery. It's on the body cam on the PowerPoint.
Now, he wasn't shot at, that was shots fired. He was opening up a car Scott.
He was about to walk up to the, the car. We've got video. We've got video of the muzzle blast. The guy was standing behind the apartment, pointing in the officer's direction. The canopy was hit at the gas pumps. That's where the officer was at. How, what else can I say?
Who was shot at before that?
I do not know, but I know we had police chief killed. I tried to get everybody to remember nineteen forty-two on May fifth. Uh, I know I was shot at on one seventy-seven with Mike Williams on a traffic stop.
How long ago?
That's right.
Yeah.
And don't portray that we've got an issue there.
No, I didn't say, no, sir, I'm not saying that. No, I'm not.
You're gonna have issues.
Nobody's arguing.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying.
Nobody's arguing.
I'm saying those things that happen with my officer.
When you talk about, okay, the, one other thing is when you talk about the number of shootings that, that we've had over the last period of time. How do you attach them to being a drug, uh, to either being a drug or a, uh, gang shooting?
I have to turn to my chief detective.
Okay, we'll just, we'll let that go. But anyway, you see where we are, you see what we've got and you understand that we're gonna look at this again.
I totally understand that. I don't know why this is coming up.
Because we had to get this out in the open because we feel like the council's been, uh, uh.
I totally understand. All we can do, all we can do, your honor, is ask for things that we think we need.
Right.
To make our job better and make the citizens safer. And we ask and you, and if you say yes. And we ask and you, and if you say yes, it's yes. And if you say no, it's no. And we're gonna get strong and keep doing what we're doing. We're gonna keep them numbers down nationally. We're gonna continue to fight crime in Hamlet.
But look, Scott.
We're gonna make everybody feel safe.
But look, seriously, um, I do want to talk with you and the city manager. Um, this, this is not the time to do it about why some of this information has gotten out.
Okay.
Without trying to embarrass anybody.
Well, yeah, I like to know.
Okay?
Yeah, I like to know because I'm gonna address it and.
Because.
I, I will address it.
We can't have, well, that, that's something that we can, that's, that's personnel. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna go there.
I understand.
But a, at the end of the day, at, at the total end of the day, this council has been, has shown and proven that we're wanting to do as much as we can for every department, especially the police department.
And we appreciate it.
And the narrative that's been out there, ma'am, that's not accurate. It's not accurate.
And not what's being told to citizens either. That's what I'm talking about.
I don't know who's telling them because this man here is not.
And we're not saying it's you.
This man here is not.
And I've told you, I know it's not you, but it.
Chief, we pre, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
And we're always here for you.
And, uh, and I know that man right there knows how it feels to be in this seat right here tonight. Um, no doubt. And I appreciate your service and I appreciate the feeling that you understand where I'm coming from tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Captain Terry, thank you. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, Mark.
Okay, moving along to the new business, we go to item number seven. That's presentation of the manager's budget message.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has before them tonight the proposed twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen fiscal year budget. As the City of Hamlet's Budget Officer and City Manager, I am pleased to present this for your consideration. The recommended budget balances at eight million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is an approximate one point seven percent decrease from the prior seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. The recommended budget consists of a general fund budget of five million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And this is an approximate three point six percent decrease from the, from the prior fiscal year. The budget includes a Powellville budget of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Excuse me, just one moment. Can we put that on the board?
Sure.
Uh, we're going through it fast and there might be something that someone would like to see. Thank you. I apologize for that.
The Powellville budget consists of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And our enterprise fund budget has two million, seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred dollars. This is an approximate two point one percent increase from the prior fiscal year. The recommended budget as it is requires a five hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollar fund balance appropriation for the general fund budget, which is an approximate nine percent increase from the prior fiscal year and projects one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars in surplus for capital reserve in the enterprise fund. In a collaborative effort, the recommended budget was prepared over a two-month period amongst city staff coupled with direction and governing input from the Hamlet City Council. Beginning at the March second budget planning session, council listened to the request of multiple departments within the city and discussed what projects were critical needs to continue to provide the greatest degree of service to city residents. After preparing an initial draft budget, a second budget planning session was held on April tenth. It continued to yield a constructive vision focusing on the production of a frugal, fair and forward-thinking operating budget. In uncertain and difficult economic times, it is important to remain committed to good stewardship of each dollar of public funds that the city is entrusted with. The recommended budget is prepared with a mindfulness of recognizing the importance of frugality through three broad measures. The first measure is one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars worth of cuts and decrease to the general fund from the prior fiscal year. These decreases represent a pledge from all city departments to remain focused on providing quality service to all residents with a conservative spirit and conscience. These decreases are reflective of practices necessary to adjust to a year of leaner spending and maximizing current resources. The second measure is a temporary freeze on most capital outlay projects. Council discussed the possibility of funding over three hundred thousand dollars worth of projects for various city departments at the initial budget planning session. However, due to the excessive fund balance appropriation needed to bring these projects into fruition and due to the fact that the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen audit showed a slight decline in fund balance for the city, these projects have been put on hold until the end of the calendar year when final numbers can be evaluated to assess the city's economic position. These projects were not immediate necessities and the temporary postponement of these projects do not hinder, minimize or jeopardize the core city services to city residents. The third measure to further the commitment of frugality is to not provide for a pay increase to city employees for this fiscal year. During more prosperous years, the city has been able to manifest appreciation to our employees through yearly pay raises. Unfortunately, in order to focus on overall spending scale backs, the recommended budget does not provide for a pay increase for this fiscal year. The city will continue to provide health care benefits to city employees, which includes a two percent increase in health insurance cost. This is the lowest increase the city has seen in four years, in four years in over health insurance cost. These three measures of frugality are difficult but necessary actions that will protect the city's financial stability and promote conservative spending. As noted above, during the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year, actual funds from the city's reserves were utilized to balance the budget, but only a fraction of what was actually budgeted was needed. Thus, these above measures are implemented with an optimistic but cautious mindset. Although frugality is important, this recommended budget does not undercut spending necessary to ensure quality safety and superior services. Next, the recommended budget seeks to further the commitment of fairness to city residents, city departments and local partners. Residents, employees and community groups are intertwined in an inseparable partnership that are interdependent on each other and the recommended budget seeks to build on that valued relationship. The recommended budget embodies financial fairness by wisely and purposefully investing in three key areas. Comprehensive training, immediate utility needs and quality of life for the community. The first measure of fairness that the recommended budget reflects is investing in comprehensive training in the city's police department. Five thousand dollars is allocated to the city's firing range and training facility, which ensures that all of the city's police officers have access to amenities that strengthen the entire department. The recommended budget also provides for eight thousand dollars in training to the police department, which will be utilized to ensure that the city's police officers have the training they need to protect, defend and serve the residents of Hamlet. Over the last few years, the city has built a quality police department with new automobiles, equipment and advanced training. And this investment in comprehensive training continues to robustly build on that progress. Next, by investing in immediate utility needs, the recommended budget promotes a fair allocation of public funds within two other departments. The recommended budget provides for an F four fifty truck for the city's Public Works Department, which will be used to continue to provide quality service to all residents. Also, six air packs for the city's Fire Department are included in the recommended budget to continue to build on the city's financial, uh, fundamental goal of safety to emergency personnel and safety to the city's residents. Lastly, in a continued effort to promote solidarity, to express a fair share of appreciation for civic organizations within the community and to enhance the quality of life through obtainable efforts, the recommended budget provides for two expenditures. The first expenditure is a combined six thousand dollars in civic contributions to the Richmond County Crime Stoppers, the Richmond County Literacy Council, the Hamlet Depot Board, the Hamlet Women's Club and the National Railroad Museum. The second expenditure is sixty thousand dollars for the repavement of the South Hamlet Basketball Court. These two measures are allocated to manifest appreciation to our community partners and provide a superior recreational opportunity to the city's residents. Lastly, to approach the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen fiscal year with a forward-thinking spirit, the recommended budget reflects new changes to the city's water and sewer billing system, which will generate much-needed additional income to the city's enterprise fund in the upcoming years. Also, in that same spirit, the recommended budget projects a modest financial forecast for the next fi, uh, fiscal year. First, effective July first, all water and sewer customers will be charged for water and sewer actually used each month, which will result in a total rate increase. All water and sewer customers will be charged a base charge and then charged per one thousand gallons used. This rate structure will help ensure that those customers who use the least are not bearing the burden of an increased water rate. Unfortunately, the costs of chemicals necessary to treat water and sewage have been on the rise the last few years, as has cost of maintenance of equipment. Water and sewer rates have not been adjusted in over ten years and this rate change will help ensure that the city is able to continue to provide quality water and sewer access to all customers. These rate changes will also help ensure that the city will be competitive for infrastructure grants in the upcoming years for repairs to the water and wastewater treatment plants. The city's enterprise system, particularly the sewer system, has been steadily declining in prior years and these rate increases will allow for much-needed revenue to critical city infrastructure in order to approach the future with a forward-thinking mentality. Next, in regards to the financial forecast for the upcoming fiscal year, the recommended budget projects that local option sales tax, both half-cent sales taxes and the city hold harmless tax will yield approximately sixty thousand dollars more than the prior fiscal year. These projections are conservatively modest and are based on prior year trends and economic assessments from outside agencies. Additionally, fees for broken locks, meter tampering, fees, water and sewer taps, notary, notary charges, planning and zoning permits and rezoning variance special use permits will be increased under the recommended budget to accurately reflect charges throughout North Carolina. In conclusion, the recommended budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one fifty-nine dash eleven. Furthermore, the recommended budget serves to further the commitments of frugality, fairness and forward-thinking. Although the recommended budget does not fund all the requests made by departments, it does provide each department with all the tools necessary to provide exceptional service to the residents of Hamlet and further the fundamental principles of safety, service and solidarity that I advocated for in last year's budget message. The public hearing on this budget is scheduled to be held during the June twelfth, twenty-eighteen regular monthly Hamlet City Council meeting here at City Hall at seven P M. Any persons wishing to make comments or ask questions may do so at the public hear, hearing prior to the adoption of the budget ordinance. The recommended budget is available for public review at Hamlet City Hall during normal business hours and will be posted on the city's website. Notice of availability of this document and the scheduled public hearing will be published in the Richmond County Daily Journal in the upcoming days. I would like to take a moment to personally thank council for their input in the budget drafting process. The extraordinary staff here at the city, particularly our Finance Officer Jill Dickens, who has worked tirelessly to prepare and assist in this recommended budget for council's consideration and all those involved in preparation of this recommended budget. I'm excited about progress that we've made together over the last sixteen months and I'm looking forward to the days and weeks ahead. It is with the sincerest gratitude and appreciation that I, as budget officer and city manager, respectfully submit and recommend this proposed budget to Hamlet City Council today, May eighth, twenty-eighteen. And we will not be voting on the budget ordinance tonight, council. It will have to sit for the rec, or for the required time under North Carolina General Statutes. But if there are any comments, suggestions or revisions that would like to be made, I'd request that be made tonight so that we can be in the, in the allotment of time that the budget has to sit.
Counsel, the floor is open. If anyone has comments.
Um, I do have one and I'm sorry I've been running back and forth. I was trying to get some, some information on the tsunami cameras that we discussed before. Um, and I know, I appreciate what you guys have put together. Um, but I would like us to try to maybe revisit the cameras to see, cause I was kinda confused. Can we get one at the same price we could get four for? So I was just trying to find out if they were offering a discount and I got, I've, I've already got.
You've got.
Got it answered. Um, I would like us to be, if the board would agree to it, to try to get four cameras. And the reason being, and it's four cameras, twenty-four K, three-year annual lease, um, unlimited warranty on it. You know, they did the presentation here. It includes the Verizon four G data plan. Um, we saw what it can do. But that will put something on the street to help the police department in areas that, uh, need the attention. And, and possibly without anyone knowing it's there. If we put it up at the right time, move them around, um, I think it could be a big benefit, especially for events. Um, now, my, my proposal is, is can we get all four? And that's what I'm gonna ask the board because with four, we could have two out being used. Um, if something hap, we could have four out being used, but we could definitely have two. But technology is technology and like I was explaining to you today, we could have one, you pop up on the street and something happens to it, goes down. Well, we need it that day and it always tears up on the day of. We can't just, yeah, it's under warranty, but we need it then. So we could have a backup, um, for either or. Uh, so my proposal is that, I'm, I'm open to, hey, if we can at least get two, two's fine. But we're talking four, uh, for twenty-four K and it would, you know, um, well, the twenty, yeah, yeah, I was, uh, double check on that.
Annually.
Yeah. It's annual, three-year.
Three-year minimum. Basically, basically six thousand dollars a piece per year.
That's right. That's right.
All right, Captain?
Okay. And I, I, I would add to that, whenever they gave that presentation, the guy that invented this thing, he came here and presented it. And it's much more than, although the primary function is crime fighting tool, it can be used for Seaboard Festival. You can hook it up out there on the street. It can live stream to phones. You download the app. Citizens can look at it. It can be hooked up to our website. Um, hundred percent, um, functional in a lot of different ways. Fire department could use it. Um, anybody could use it in, within the city. Uh, primarily, it would be out and about in some, uh, higher, higher crime areas, some of the ones you've talked about. Um, I would also like to see at least one, you know, on, on Main Street all the time. So show what we have done. I mean, the City of Hamlet is not, it's not in, in the shape that people portray it in. You're right around seventy-four. Look at all the stuff that's popped up there. There's more good news coming to Hamlet. You know what I mean? So I was for that in the budget meeting. I, I wanted to do that then. We decided to table it. I'm for it now. Um, but he's making that in form of emotion. I second it.
Yeah. How many cameras did this have in? Wasn't it four, four cameras in each unit? So we essentially, you're talking, uh, sixteen. It's almost like having sixteen officers on the street because you've got sixteen different views. So I mean, I think this would be, I think it would be a good thing and we did table it to come back and discuss it. But I think we can make this work with the budget we have in place.
The one thing I, I don't think's been brought up is just, those things are just a deterrent when they're.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's just like a, you pass a police car on the street, you're gonna slow down. I do it. And, uh, that, that's.
Which is why, which is why we wanted all the officers to have the car.
Yeah, and it's a deterrent. It is, it's a deterrent, you know, when the thing just up, is what, is, is what the guy portrayed it.
So my motion is for four. We'll have to have, um, if we do, if this passes tonight, we will have to have a way to get them connected up. We want that protected as well. Um, obviously they'll be high enough to where unless you plan on climbing up on ladders and getting to it, which you're gonna be seeing, um, you can't mess them up. So that's, that's my motion.
You can get them out. I mean, that's not a problem. Get all four of them out. Like you said, if one of them goes down, just move it to where it needs to be, but use all four.
They had to have power?
Yeah, they have power. Under twenty volt?
Well, I just have one comment. When this thing first came around, I was, I was for it then and I'm for it now. I only say this. Uh, after this project was turned down the first time, uh, I happened to see Van Billingsley. And I was telling him about this, uh, camera that with, the guy brought up here and one thing or another. Uh, Van knew all about it, knew exactly what I was talking about. Um, relayed all types of information pertaining to how it works, what he can do. I don't know whether he actually sells them, got them in stock or he has access to them or just what. But it sounded like he, he had the same cameras that this other guy had. And I don't know where this guy was from, the guy that gave the presentation. But I would, I would at least like to see what Van offers in, in the camera field that the same, compare the two and see if they're, they're the same or maybe it's a cheaper price. I don't know. But, uh, anyway, uh, Van Billingsley out at the, the electronic service company off, offers the same thing according to what he said. I don't know, but I thought we would at least talk to him, give him an opportunity to at least bid on it or, or come explain what his functions are, his cameras, what he can do. Basically, he said the same thing that this other guy said he could do about zooming in, do this and do that. Basically, he said the same thing that this other guy said he could do, about zooming in, do this and do that, and sounded mighty high tech to me. So I thought we ought to at least talk to Van about it and compare the two. And, and then if we have to, or need to, and go to this other guy, this Tassami or whatever it is, Kasami. I'm all for it, I'm all for either way, but.
Make the motion for a specific dollar amount.
There could be different manufacturers out there that we.
Yeah.
We can put the specs out for, uh.
Yeah, because we know, we know these are, we know they're bulletproof, right?
Yeah.
Um, and they're fully warranted, we're leasing them. So if something tears up, it's not on us, it's, we're paying for everything, they'll replace cameras.
Price of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
And tonight, if we just allocate that money, I believe Mr. Bowie's motion was to allocate twenty-four thousand dollars for cameras.
And if he can do it, fine, if he can do it cheaper, and the same stuff now, I'm not talking about, but the same functions, the same features.
I retract the motion for the purchase of these four. And we'll, I'll make a motion to appropriate twenty-four K for the yearly lease of some units, whether it be one to four or whatever. Uh, obviously, we're going to get four for twenty-four thousand, that's what I'd like to make the motion for, is for four cameras for twenty-four K, pending what we find out that they have to offer.
And I'll second that.
But we definitely want to make sure that it's the same specifications and it's the same quality.
Everything's same.
Yeah.
We don't want poor quality. Mr. Lindsey, do you have a comment?
Not about that, no sir.
Okay, all right. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves likewise. Yeah, up so.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sorry, I have it, but it's in an email, I couldn't, I didn't have time to dig it up.
Okay, moving along. Item number eight, we table.
I'm sorry, I did have a comment about the budget.
Oh, go ahead, all right, I'm sorry, we've gotten off on something, man, thank you.
Were disappointed that we didn't add the additional, uh, funding to tear down, demolish houses. They, they, uh, people have approached me when they found out about it, and I know this is a, probably another thing that could help, that we need to put as a high priority, we can't do it tonight. But, uh, tearing down some more houses, it's, it gets on Facebook every now and then, and it's one of the worst, the people brought it up all the time.
You're correct.
Uh, so I hope that in the future, we can look at it and try to, try to add this.
And the answer to that, one of the reasons we didn't put it back in was because there's, logistically, we couldn't spend, the amount is already budgeted before the six, next six months, and we're going to do everything we can to.
Well, I mean, you have people that address you.
Right, right.
Address.
But it wasn't, but just for their benefit, we didn't eliminate that extra money. We just said, go with what we got, and then at the six-month increment, we would reevaluate it. And hopefully, in the past, we've been able to do some pretty, pretty good things in the six month.
Did, did we have, were we able to, uh, obtain all of our capital outlays in this year that we had budgeted, I just, I don't, you know.
Yeah, as far as I know, Mr. Lindsey, everything that we have budgeted for in the seventeen, eighteen year has been expended.
Because we can always make amendments if we want to, um, find another property.
Something didn't get purchased or something like that, it was just.
Now, we're good on that.
Good, good.
Oh, and, and you brought up properties, um, Gail and everyone worked really good and hard and got a quick response. There was a house over on, we determined Riley Street, um, the entire side of the house, all the windows were busted out of it and all that. And they acted really quick, all that was boarded up, cleaned up, and they're back up to code in, what, a matter of two weeks?
Let's give Ms. Lowery credit for that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because she, she worked on that hard.
And they're, and they're getting that house down on Hamlet Avenue slowly, but surely, piece by piece.
Piece by piece, yeah, that's right.
You know, it's, it's.
Thank you.
Moving on with it.
I got two quick things about the budget.
Go ahead.
I wish we could have given the, uh, city employees a raise, um, hopefully with some of the new additions that we've had come into Hamlet. Um, new businesses and tax revenue hopefully will be in better shape next year. And one of the things that I'm as proud of, if not probably one of the top two or three, but I, I would have to say this is probably one of the top things I'm proud of since I've been on here. Uh, since two thousand and five, I've always asked and tried to get the, the city water refigured where, um, single folks living in Hamlet, which is mostly the, um, the elderly population, widowers, widows, to where they're not paying the same thing as a family of three or four. And I would like to personally compliment the city manager, uh, Mr. Blanton, for acting on that and getting that done. And now, um, it's fair. And that was a, a big thing, and I, I'm, I'm really proud that we were able to do that, that, that really means a lot.
And to clarify, that'll be in people's August billing versus the, what starts with the reading in July.
July reading, that's right.
Okay.
All right. Okay, anything else on the budget? If not, we'll move along. All right, we have a fourth, item number nine. Appointment to Hamlet Depot Board, we have a, uh, application from a Ms. Betty Roller on Rice Street in Hamlet, and has been recommended by the, uh, board down there that we put her on there. What are your wishes, counsel?
Make, make a motion that, uh, we accept Betty Roller as a new member for the board, based on their recommendation.
Got a second, Jonathan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves likewise. Thank you. The, um, next item of business is, uh, item number ten, which is appointments to the Hamlet ABC Board. And, uh, the board has requested that we reappoint Ms. Shannon Bowers to serve on the board. Her current position expires June of twenty eighteen. Uh, also, it's, uh, council member Masagie's term also expires in June, and she serves as council's representative on the board. And I would recommend that we not do anything on hers until she's able to be here to say what, uh, what her wishes are as far as that goes. But I will entertain, uh, um, motion to reappoint Ms. Bowers.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Bowers back to the ABC Board.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Have a second, is there any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves likewise, thank you. Next item of business, item number eleven is nineteen sixty-eight Hamlet baseball proclamation from the mayor. And I will read this, whereas the nineteen sixty-eight Hamlet High School baseball team is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary, and whereas the members of the nineteen sixty-eight Red Rams team were John Adamey, Mike Bolick, Buddy Kobel, Frank Folger, Glenn Gregson, Bill Griggs, Terry Howell, Richard Knopp, Jimmy McKeithen, Lee Meacham, Jerry Mills, Mark Self, Larry Stinson, Jerry Suggs, Eddie Tomlinson, Granton White, Gary Wilson, and Steve Winchester. And whereas the team excelled from the training and support of head coach George Whitfield and assistant coach Larry Weatherly. And whereas the managers of the team were Johnny Kendall, Dr. Cecil Gordon Junior, and George Huff. And whereas the Hamlet Red Rams had a winning regular season of sixteen wins and two losses, and an overall season record of twenty-two wins and three losses. And whereas the Hamlet Red Rams won the District Four championship with a two oh victory over Sanford, advanced to the Southeastern Conference Championship, and defeated Dunn with a score of four to three, and won the first round of the state three A playoffs with a six to four win over Stedman. And whereas the team then went on to earn the Eastern Three A championship by defeating Garner six to nothing. And whereas, the Red Rams clinched the title of North Carolina Three A champions with two victories in the best of three championship series against Bowman. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, along with my fellow council members, do hereby honor the nineteen sixty-eight Hamlet High School Red Rams baseball team on their fiftieth anniversary for their outstanding success. The next item of business that I had requested to be on here tonight, this is Municipal Clerks Week. And I had asked for a proclamation to, that I could do. And what my proclamation says is, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agents of, agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. I, now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, do recognize the week of May the sixth through May the twelfth as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Gail Strickland, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you so much for what you do, thank you that you stepped into a job and made it a smooth transition. And we just appreciate every day what you do for all of us. Counsel, have any comments on that?
No, I just want to comment that Gail did step right in, uh, right into the position, just like she had been there for years. And she has been a big, big help. Uh, there's no time, I can't come here and ask anything, and of course, I know she's known me since I was strolling around, but, uh, but she's been a big help, and thank you so much, Gail, for everything you do.
Same thing, thank you, appreciate it.
Counsel, the item number thirteen is approval of our, our monthly approval of tax releases that you have before you. And, uh, I just asked for a motion.
No issues, move to approve.
Have a motion, have a motion, it's a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves likewise. At this time, we'll move along to other business, item number fourteen, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that same note, I did want to note that our new tax collector, Thomasina McDonald, began a couple of weeks ago. She's doing an excellent job, and we're certainly excited to have her on board as our tax collector. Next, I wanted to make note that the city will be closed on Memorial Day, May twenty-eighth. All city offices will be closed that day. And then just lastly and briefly, it's been very exciting the last few weeks here in Hamlet with La Cabana and Jerry's Diner opening, and then the exciting news about Sun Casual coming down to the former McLaurin Center. So I'm certainly looking forward to the days and weeks ahead of all the excitement that's going around and hoping to build on that progress. And that is all that I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move along to item number fifteen, comments and counsel, uh, Mr. Lindsey.
Uh, probably won't be up, but remember your mother, Sunday's Mother's Day, and, and, uh, when they're gone, they're gone. But, uh, and, and also the restaurants, that's two big, uh, good things happening for our community. And they appear to be doing well, so, but, uh, remember your mama.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McQueen?
Uh, same thing, just, uh, I mean, I, I ride around Hamlet and I see a different city than what's been presented, uh, either on the regional news or local newspapers. And I'm proud to live here, and I'm proud of the progress that we've had. I'm proud of the seventy-four corridor coming through, the Lane Professional Building. Um, RCC is going to utilize some of the old hospital. Um, I'm proud of the, the, the new convenience store, the Dairy Queen there, Mexican restaurant, I won't try to say the name like you did. Um, Jerry's, um, a lot of good things happening, the McLaurin Center property. Um, we live in a very economically depressed area, it's not something just synonymous to, to Hamlet. We got a lot of challenges and obstacles, just like any other city our size. And I think that our staff, this council manager, um, has done a tremendous job. Tightened, tightened straps up, um, do the best we can do with what we got and move forward. And the good thing about it, when you see a new business come to town, um, that's, that's, that's money coming into the city. Whether it's tax money, whether it's sales tax money. Um, so when you, when you get on your social media and you bash Hamlet for spending sixty thousand dollars to pave a, um, a basketball court so kids can have a place to go play and get off the street, think about what you're doing. Um, I'll ask any of the two police officers back there, could you have many other good uses of money than have a place for your kids to go play and get off the street? I mean, that's, to me, that's a good use of money. Um, so before you bash, why don't you go out and look and see what's actually going on? Or you come to meetings and laugh about what's going on and things are talked about, why don't you look around and see the positives, instead of always focusing on the negatives? Because I give everything I got to this town, and probably talked about negatively more than anybody up here. And it does not bother me one bit, because I'm passionate about this town. And I will not tolerate people putting us down and talking about us in a negative manner. Come get involved, come sit down and see what we do, and do it without laughing and smirking, making fun and jokes and talking negatively about the town. If you don't like it, leave. You don't like living in Hamlet, there's, there's houses for sale everywhere. We have a good town, we have hardworking people in this town. And I am absolutely sick and tired of the narrative that's being portrayed about this town that I chose to be my hometown and the town that I love, and I'm not going to sit back and allow it to go on anymore. I really truly appreciate everything that everybody does in this town for the positive. And if you want to tear it down, I'm going to be there to go against you every step of the way. If you don't like it, leave. That's all I have to say.
Oh, okay. Mr. Martin?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Bowie?
I don't have anything, um, I was just going to say on the budget, uh, I've not really had anybody mention or bring up or have any complaints about the, uh, water increase. There's been some questions, but really no complaints, and I, I appreciate that. This is, you know, you think about it, it's ten years, ten years that there's not been an increase. Um, where if you really kind of look at it, your insurance goes up every year, you get nothing out of it, but you still pay the increase. So, you know, at least here, you're getting clean water, um, water your lawn, you know, so many uses you, you cook with it. Uh, so, um, and just on top of that, I, we're paying it too, because we all have to live in the city of Hamlet to serve on this board. So obviously, if we had a choice, we're not going to make ourselves pay more money. Um, but in this situation, we had to do it for the best interest of the infrastructure that needs to be, um, kind of built up, because it's been a long time. Our guy spent a lot of time, you know, I see Billy shaking his head back there, he knows. Guy spent a lot of time working, uh, on trying to keep up old, um, pumps and everything else, uh, pipeline, all your lines and everything. So this will help us, uh, uh, the city manager mentioned it helps us get grants, but it's going to also help us keep up with the, uh, increasing cost of, of everything that comes with providing clean water. So I just wanted to throw that in there. And I know, like I said, I haven't heard much, but I just wanted to throw it out there, because if somebody's got it in their mind, I just want them to think about what they're getting out of it. So it's, it's going to be, um, had a question asked the other day, it was, uh, forty-nine dollars for a price outside of the city of Hamlet, and that was for just water, where I think my bill was fifty-five dollars, and that was for water and sewage. So I think we're moving in the right direction, and it's all due to the, the staff, the employees we have on board with us in this board. So I appreciate everybody and what they do.
Mr. Mayor, could I make one other?
You sure can.
Um, thinking about this camera deal that we were talking about, I would like to expedite our, our conversation with Mr. Billingsley, uh, rather than wait till next month to have a presentation.
We might need this on July the fourth at our thing, July the fourth thing.
Oh, it's okay.
So I don't know how, unless you call for a special meeting, or some, who's gonna get in touch with Van, or. Uh, you know, we need to make some contact, so that we can immediately discuss this with him and see what's going on. So that you or somebody can inform us, okay, this is what we need to do.
Sure, the police chief and I can meet with Mr. Billingsley within the next week and then.
Well, you can actually make that decision as well, cause it's under twenty-five.
Yeah.
Well, the money is not allocated in this fiscal year. Budget will have to wait till July one, unless a budget amendment was to be done to do it now. That's right.
We need to expedite this thing.
Yeah, we just need to have it ready, so we can have it ready to go.
That's enough. Let's just get it done, one way or the other, but we need to put it on fast track.
Long as we don't have to pay for it by until first of July.
Well, we wouldn't have to do that, but we just need to know, so we'll know what we're gonna do.
Sure, sure, and I can get that information to Council as soon as possible.
Yeah, if we could have it by next meet, that'd be good.
Yeah, good, good point. July fourth.
Okay, yeah, it would be nice to have it for that. Were you finished, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me. The uh, issues that were brought forth tonight in regards to. The police department, I, I can't say enough for what they do. Of course, you know, thirty years, I know what goes on and what has gone on, and I know that uh. What kind of job their officers are doing over there, and it's graciously appreciated. It's unfortunate that we had the situation we had last fourth of July. Had we had just a little bit of time, had we had a week or two weeks to know that something like this, we could be prepared. But I think it was like two days or something like it. It was the only notice we had, and we just absolutely could not at that time. Bring, bring it together, and it was all as a result of the murder that occurred at a store up there on one seventy-seven. And you know, this was one incident, and then we had to make a decision, and unfortunately, we had to make the decision we made. Uh, we also know that this year, we're gonna get twice fireworks, so we're gonna have a double show this year, and we're extremely proud of that. But uh, we, you know, maligning the city, uh, is just, is just a bad thing. The people of the city of Hamlet have elected this council up here. This council really works hard. This council is very concerned. We're constantly in, all of us in contact with the city manager. Uh, we take any incident or any complaint that anybody has, we take it to heart. We don't just blow these things off. And um, I have to say for both uh, Billy and for the manager, that, you know, they get a complaint out here, somebody complaining about their street. Somebody complaining about their water. They will go, the manager gets in the truck with Billy, and they go talk to the people. And you know, this is, this, this is just really good for the city, and we feel good about this. But most of the people who live in town understand how government works. They understand what we're having to do. The hardest thing that the city council has to do is come up with the budget every year. You wish that you had more money to do more stuff with, and you just don't have it. It seems like every time we turn around, you got to have a garbage truck, or you got to have a police car. Uh, I was, what is, every two years, we have to buy a garbage truck. They just wear out. If you think about them coming around every week to every house in town. And I wish we could do more, but you do need to know that these folks up here, they're working hard. They really do. And uh, there's nothing that comes up that we don't, you know, as long as we can get informed about it, we can do something about it. If you let it sit, we can't do anything about it, and so we're always glad to hear from you. I'm always glad to hear from you. A lot of people call me, and I don't care what time of day or night it is, I'll answer the telephone. I've done that for years, and I'm always glad to do it. But all of our staff, our staff works hard. Our staff enjoys the work that they do. Uh, they just seem to be happy when they come to work. Now, I might, there might be some days I walk in and they really aren't happy, but they don't show it to me, so. There we go. Uh, one other thing that has gone on, we're talking about emergencies that come up. We learned. Last week that uh, there's a problem down at one of the ball fields down there at the American Legion. And it turns out, we've got some lights out. Of course, you can't play ball at night if you don't have the lights. So the manager went down with Duke Power people and has looked at it, and the expenditure is gonna end up being somewhere in the forty thousand dollar range if we do it. But we're gonna look at some other areas, and in that light, I have asked Mr. Lindsey, who has done tremendous amount of work. With those fields down there, if he would get with the manager and see if, see what they can come up with to get the repairs done, or whatever needs to, and uh, bring it back to council. And uh, see what we can do on that. But we do have to keep our ball fields up. We're, you know, we're a big ball uh, team here in Hamlet and uh, have a lot of things going on, so. Again, that's another one of those items that they just, it just hits you, and you don't have any choice in it. I do wish that uh, all the mothers have a wonderful Mother's Day and uh. Just glad for everything that's done. Again, I appreciate the work that the city council does. It's uh, it's, sometimes it's not gratifying, because you just have to work so hard at it. And, but it's, you know, it's a thing. That's what we want to do. And uh, other than that, I don't have anything else. Uh, does anybody have any questions or anything from Mr. Morpheus? Uh, he's sitting over here tonight, and, okay. If not, we'll move along to item number seventeen, and I would ask for a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute. One forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A, three, five, and six for personnel issues.
Motion to go in closed session.
Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll go into closed session.